I call this meeting to order. The invocation will be given by Councilmember Karas, if you would please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Everyone, please join me in our Father. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to stay our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Now the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, one nation, visible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay. Now, if everyone could please, you know, keep, make sure you're muted or whatever so that we can start. And then if you need to talk and I don't notice you, just wave in the thing. I could see everybody on the screen. You'll all get a chance to speak. We got a lot of important issues today, so I want to make sure everybody has a chance to voice their opinion. The approval of the March 2020 financials, you've seen those. They've been provided to you. Does anyone have any questions or concerns or reference to those?
No.
Okay, so we're in consensus they're approved, correct?
Yes.
You've all seen the April 2020 minutes. Is there any corrections or omissions?
Yeah.
No.
Okay. And we have agenda items. Item number thirty-eight, twenty twenty, would like that one? John Canelli? And item thirty-nine, twenty twenty, the Department of Motor Vehicles for the Harvester enrichment project. Bob Iakowski. Okay. Communications?
The only thing we have for communications was to re-put the Genesee Country Farmers Market back on the agenda. I believe you were all provided with more information regarding the association between the bid and the farmers market. If there's anything further, I know Marty has some, you know, background and detail on that, but I think that was all that was left to do.
All right, Marty, also, there was some corrections made. You made sure that they updated some information. Is that also true?
Yes, I got what they have, and they were updating their corporate information at the state level. The information as far as on the application itself is correct. And the other, the other items too, as I went back to confirm, I asked them to actually confirm to us their documentation of relationship. And Beth did. She found that they, that their agreement with Genesee Country Market after they merged in two thousand and fifteen was a little bit outdated. So they upgrading that, they renewed their relationship, reestablished the position on the board, and they're providing in-kind services for marketing and other logistical services for the farmers market. And that's my best understanding, at least from the executive director.
So the, the Genesee Country Farmers Market is a nonprofit organization, correct?
Yes, yes, they've got some updating they've got to do. They've also got affiliation with bid that they're updating. They're supposed to be bringing back to the bid board the updated agreement for the relationship with the farmers market, so.
But I just wanted to make sure that they were, they're nonprofit, and there's different people who work for different companies who are on the board. In other words, Schwab Farms isn't the owner of the farmers market. They're just, they have an employee that happens to be on the board, just like Beth is on the board and various other members are on the board. They have other jobs, and then they, they also work and volunteer to be on the farmers market board, correct?
Right. And one thing I would like to point out, because of the information that was discussed at the last meeting, it has, the executive director has gone back on a number of things to make sure things are updated and proper in relationship to how the farmers market. They had some additional information provided also to our office that they are and have developed a plan for how to work. Farmers markets have a certain COVID nineteen protocol that they need to follow, which is going to be challenging, but, but they, they do have that, and it is in place, and the health department is aware.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or concerns at this point?
Yeah.
Yeah. John and then Bob.
Okay. I don't know if any of you have received any, any comments from, from local restaurateurs, but I have in the past in regards to the food vendors that are allowed to come into the farm market and sell food there as far as, you know, prepared food, like food trucks, things of that nature. And some of our restaurants that are in the, in the bid district are concerned that these people are coming in and they're able to sell food at lunchtime, which is actually taking away lunch business from a lot of our downtown restaurateurs. And so that also is my concern as well, because especially now, just as in the past, but more so now, they're, they're all fighting for as much business as they can get as far as takeout business, and that's what's going to happen if these vendors are allowed to come to the farmers market and sell. They are also takeout food as well. So I have a concern about that as well as a lot of my restaurateurs that have approached me.
Bob?
Yeah, I, I have several items. I'd just like to go through them, and then maybe Marty can address them. But one of the things I was a little surprised before we finished discussing it this evening, last week, there was a press release in the Batavian about the farmers market. Now, don't get me wrong, I'm in full favor of the farmers market. We shop there all the time. But the press release stated that any not-for-profits or charities can have a vendor space free. And so one question is, how much of the parking lot is to be used? Is it spelled out, or is it whatever they need? The next thing, question, all vendors have to pay a fifty-dollar membership fee. What are they a member of? The other thing I'd, I asked, and I didn't get it. Who are the other board officers, the president and vice president? We know that who the treasurer and secretary are, but I'd like to know who the president and vice president is. And as far as finances, I know councilperson Christian had asked for a spreadsheet. But one of the things I find puzzling, in two thousand and nineteen, they had a net income of just under twenty-six thousand, and expenses were slightly over there with a loss. But if you take insurance and payment for a market manager, you're looking at about six thousand dollars. So I'm just kind of curious if they spent nineteen thousand dollars on the advertised. And then the, there's no cost on the application shown for city. I don't know if inspection department gets involved or DPW. I don't, I think they pretty much are self-sustaining. But one of the things that, just to sum my concerns up, when it comes to event applications, we really don't have a policy. And then we kind of approve them and, you know, just sort of a nod and wink thing. Everybody, if anybody object, no, we'll find it's approved. I really feel that we should handle it like any other business item. In other words, if we all agree to move it from conference to business and then a business meeting, vote on it. But that's just my personal opinion. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah.
John? John, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Just back to my point that I guess I really didn't finish. What I would like to see is, again, the farmers market is a wonderful thing, bringing fresh produce for sale downtown. And, and I obviously see the, the benefits of bringing warm bodies downtown as well. But back to my point, if it's a true farmers market, why can't we have it where we have all these farm vendors coming in to sell their fresh produce in items and require elimination of, you know, prepared food vendors? I, I don't see why that can't be part of the plan. And, and again, I think a lot of downtown restaurant owners would be very appreciative of that.
Anyone else? Because I'm going to have George weigh in real quick. Go ahead, George.
Yeah, just quickly, I guess I would say to this point of the event application, it's a fairly discreet review, right? We look at the location of a proposed event with the question of whether or not there's costs to the city. Look to the question of whether or not the application's been fully prepared and filled out, whether or not the releasing indemnity has been signed, if necessary, the insurance provided. So it's usually discreet. I understand there's a series of questions here, perhaps about bid, but this really doesn't seem to be consistent with how we dealt with event applications in the past, which is look at a very discreet set of issues and questions and make sure it's a lawful and appropriate event and move it forward, much like we would other event applications, even if there's financial compensation involved, such as the, the running event, the corporate challenge, for example. You know, it's, it's really traditionally been a situation where the city has looked at a very limited set of information. So I just have a slight concern that we're going fairly far afield here for a particular event application and treating this one a little differently than we would other event applications. So that's just my two cents.
Well, and, and Beth is on the board, and she did email me a while back in reference to food trucks and whatnot and her concern with that. And then this whole Corona thing hit, and, and we really didn't have a chance to address that because we've been, you know, inundated with other more serious issues to deal with. So I don't know why, as a member of that board, she'd be able to express what you said about the restaurateurs down on Main Street. If they're bid members, why wouldn't Beth represent them as the secretary of the board and just say, you know, hey, we're not really happy about this or that, and she has some say in it. She's on the executive board. But Rosemary, you had a question? Go ahead.
Yeah, the only thing is, I want to remind everybody, any of those food trucks have to pay sales tax. I want everyone to know that. Thank you.
Yeah, so they're technically a roving vendor anyway, whether they're there or anywhere else.
That's right.
They're, you know, they're, and they're paying a fee to be there, and it's only the one day a week. It's not like every day at noon. But I understand the concern, but that's, that's been a concern with a lot of different things.
It's business.
Fine Walk, and, and you have the Beartavia, and Summer in the City. These are all like one-time events that definitely bring in other people on Main Street to sell their wares. And obviously, that's got to be affecting the business owners who are down there every day. And that, to me, would be more of a internal bid issue than it is for counseling and getting involved. I mean, we approve parade permits and things like that. It's almost like some of these things are the right to people to assemble under the First Amendment, and they're just graciously letting us know what they're doing so that we can have resources in place to make sure they're covered and that they're not in the middle of the road, hampering traffic and other things. And technically, if they wanted to all just show up there and take over the parking lot and have a meeting, it's a public place. I mean, we, we couldn't, we'd have a difficult time trying to kick them out of there if they were being peaceful and it was only for a reasonable period of time. You know, unless it was, that's why we have these forms. At least that's why it was explained to me. These are a way to just give us a heads up so that we can provide a service to all the people that are going to be there, as well as the community, to make sure that we're not conflicting and getting in their way. They're not getting in our way, and we're not blocking their, their progress. They're not blocking our traffic. So it was one of those deals. But I, I understand the concern. I don't know, how would you suggest we address it? Anybody, I mean, if we don't want to do that, how would we? We could ask them, and we could, you know, tell them, but we can't, I don't see how we could prevent them from having this permit when we allow others to have various parades and various other things. Maybe we don't agree with those type of parades or whatnot, but we, you know, we can't prevent them from, from doing their public expression of what they want to do, so.
Gino?
Go ahead, John.
It's, it's not a, it's not a, I didn't bring this up to, to say I don't want to see the farmers market downtown. I wanted to bring those concerns to light, which would be, should be handled as well through the bid. And if Beth is in charge of the bid, I know a lot of, I've heard, you know, from a lot of downtown vendors, not just restaurants, and they, a lot of them are not actively involved in the bid, although they have to pay the, the bid assessment. And they're just not active with the bid. And I think it's a, it's a matter of, of the bid realizing that a lot of these downtown restaurants, you know, are challenged by having more food vendors come downtown, be able to sell food downtown at the lunch hour that aren't having to pay the bid assessment. And yes, they collect sales tax, and I, and, and I understand what Roe is saying there, but they also are not paying the property tax or the bid assessment that these downtown restaurateurs are forced to pay because they're located in a downtown area. So I would encourage the people that have come to me to go to Beth and to the board members of the, of the bid and express their dissatisfaction with the, with the setup at the market. And I don't know if anything can be done there, but I just wanted to bring that to light, that that is a challenge for a lot of the downtown restaurant owners.
I would totally agree. Patty, you wanted to say something? Go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to agree. Being, I work with the bid board, and if these owners are concerned, I would rather they would take it to the bid board than try to take it to city council, because we are only going to have to turn around and take it back to the bid board. So if we could encourage them to go straight to Beth, that would be wonderful.
I agree with Patty.
Well, and let me, let me just read an email I received November, or excuse me, March eleventh, twenty twenty, from Downtown Bid. And it basically said, they had some questions setting up some parameters within the city permits to restrict food trucks from the downtown area on specific days of the week. Buffalo Rochester just incorporated some verbiage in their permit application process that restricts their downtown areas so as not to take away profit from local businesses. And wondered how hard it is to write that in, that would be in our permit process for getting sales permits at city hall. I would imagine Heidi would issue those permits, and I don't know if these vendors get those in. We'll ask in a minute. But, so they have several local restaurant owners call upset that there is a food truck parked directly in front of their building, and they're paying the taxes, and the food truck's sitting on Main Street right in front of their building, taking away their lunch business right there in front of their doorway. So the board has had some discussion on it and thought maybe if they could discourage, discourage the food trucks on Main, two blocks of our downtown restaurants, and allow them the outer areas on different days of the week, special events and public market would be exceptions to this policy. So according to this, they're already accepting the fact that the public market would be the exception. They're more concerned with the food truck parked right on the sidewalk, right in front of Name Your Restaurant, and people are going to walk into restaurant, and they're like, hey, let's just grab something at the food truck instead. I think I'd be quite upset if I was a restaurant owner as well, if there's this big food truck right in front of my restaurant, and I'm expecting a lunch crowd, and there's people there. So that's something that came down, and she sent it, I believe, to all of city council on that date. But we have been quite busy with other things, and that was right around the time of our budget. And then right after that, all heck broke loose. So Heidi, what, what's the scoop on the permit process? Do they, food trucks need permits and things like that?
That.
Yes, they get a solicitor's permit, vendor permit from the city. They're a hundred dollars for the year, and they have to identify where they're going to be. And then, you know, similar to other applications, we check with the departments to make sure that it's not in violation of, you know, where they want to park. They'll usually be very specific about where they want to set up, because they like to be in the same place all the time, so people know where to find them. So, you know, I know we worked with Public Works last year to make sure that one of the food trucks was not parking on the sidewalk, it was going to be too heavy, things like that. So we definitely work with the food truck vendors to, you know, try to accommodate everybody.
So maybe we could, if Marty, a suggestion here? If Marty wants to reach out to bid and have them define the areas they have a concern with, and then maybe we could bring it up at a council meeting and maybe re-change the, I believe, is that part of the charter? Or is that, where does that authority and that permit regulations, where is that located?
It's in the code, city code.
Okay, so we could maybe modify the city code for the food vendor truck to, again, not be right in the middle of the bid area, which they're paying taxes, and they're paying the bid tax or the assessment. And then on top of that, they're parking right in front of a restaurant. So I think there is a reason for that, but even bid itself, what did say that the public market would be the exception? So I don't think that applies in the market part, but it's definitely something we should probably do some research on and revisit, and maybe we could kind of back them off the main areas and get them just on the edges. I know, I've been seeing a food truck on Elock Street at the old Pasquale's. So they've been parking there on certain days of the week, and I don't think he's open that much anymore, so he's probably allowing them to do that, and that, again, is on private property. So I, I don't see why we couldn't visit that and at least bring that up and have a topic of discussion on, where does bid actually want us to consider them kind of staying away, giving them a buffer zone? We can do that. Rosemary, you had a question?
Actually, it's called competition. And then let me tell you, there's an owner on Center Street Smokehouse that has a food truck, and he's all over. He not only pays sales tax, but he pays property tax, great amount of property tax. And I think you're opening up Pandora's Box if you decide to do this. Like I said, it's competition. And I know about the food truck because I had the first one in Batavia. So I know about the licenses and the permits and everything else, right, Heidi?
Well, this is, um, this is bid themselves writing us a letter to give them some slack so we can at least maybe find some more information what they're talking about. And again, it's way overdue. It's over a month overdue or two months overdue that they sent us this letter. It's at least worth looking into, seeing what they had, what their concerns were. It's their district, and if that's something they want to do, I mean, again, like you said.
Let's, let's, let's face it, most of these people from out of town that have the food, that have the farmers market anyways. I mean, you're going to do this to people in the city of Batavia that have done this for years? Or the fact that maybe you might be looking at a lawsuit with the city with this if you're going to continue on with this nonsense? Like I said, it's competition, food competition. Nobody makes anyone go to those trucks. Nobody makes anyone go to a restaurant. They do, they, it's a choice, freedom of choice. Thanks.
Well, I mean, how's everyone else feel about it? I mean, do we, do we just ignore it, or do we at least look into seeing what Beth was talking about? And again, if bid is, some of the members aren't participating, you know, I can't control that. I mean, if I was paying an assessment, I certainly would try to voice my opinion to bid. And if, you know, if what Rosemary says is true, if she says it's true, which I have nothing to believe, reason to believe she isn't, she, she has a good point. I mean, competition is competition.
That's right.
And do we get involved in it, or do we stay out of it?
Stay out of that.
We, we should stay out of it, and I think Rosemary's right.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else, how they feel about it? Do we, do we want to look?
Yeah, Council President, if I might.
Go ahead.
Just to the point that Heidi raised about the BMC, if that's something we start looking into relative to changes to food permits and vendors and things of that sort, obviously, that's a local law change. We'd have to go through the notice, proposed change of the law, and follow the appropriate procedures there. So that's going to be a process if we go down that road.
Right, right. And it starts out with at least finding out what Beth had in mind and maybe talking to her about it and, and seeing where she wants to go with it. But, you know, again, it was a, that was a request she made to council, and, and I don't know if anybody responded back to her, but I think she at least is entitled to someone to have a conversation with her. She asked for our help, and we, if we tell her, sorry, we're staying out of it, at least we respond to back, and we tell her, sorry, we're staying out of it. But we should at least contact her and, and address it like any other complaint, and at least go through it and look into it. That's just my thought. And I apologize for it getting by me, but it's something that, we were so hit, at that point, we were hit from all directions. I mean, you know, it, it was just impossible to keep track of everything, so.
I, I do think there's some merits to just looking into it and cooperating with bid also, because I, I think if you have a restaurant, somebody pulls up with a large food truck, walks out your restaurant, it will, you will lose business. And, you know, I know Buffalo and Rochester have addressed this and resolved it. In Buffalo, you can't just park a food truck anyplace you want. And there's other concerns too, as to pedestrian traffic and all that. And what Rosemary said, I do know Center Street, they do pay rent to private businesses to park their truck, which I applaud them for that. They're doing it right, to my knowledge. But without getting into individual businesses, I do think we need to see what the problem is, what the situation is.
Well, we have, we do vendors licenses from people going door to door. We restrict the hours and when they can go and knock on people's door and things like that. So, I mean, again, I, I totally understand Rosemary's point, you know. And anybody that knows about opening a Pandora's Box, Rosemary knows about that. So I think we should take her advice to some degree, but at least we need to look into it and at least inquire and what Beth had in mind. Maybe they've already resolved this. This is two months old when I got this email. By now, they might have already resolved it and felt it's a non-deal, you know? So, I mean, that's just my thought. At least find out what she was, what she meant, and then Marty could come back and tell us what it was all about. Or maybe, maybe you're right, maybe we should just leave it alone. But, you know, didn't want to get too deep in the weeds on this on today because it was just that. So we're going to approve the farmers market at this point and move on from that.
Can I get in terms of the question, Gino?
Yeah, Marty, do you know about the parking lot? Are they limited the space, or can they just expand all the way around the corner of the mall?
No, they're limited to that back part of the parking lot over there. I think, what is that, the east, the east end? Yeah, they're limited over back in that area, because we have to be careful on the mall settlement agreement. We have an agreement to keep so many parking spaces open. And so, yeah, we can't just allow them just to go sprawl everywhere. They have to stay within a contained area.
As far as what they get for the fifty-dollar fee, now we're talking about the workings of a nonprofit organization. And I don't know, I have, we don't, do we ask that same question when, you know, Go Art wants to have a parade? Or when, you know, the Beartavia wants to do something? Do we ask them, you know, what their fees are and what their financial situation is, and we demand spreadsheets? That's where I'm, that's where we kind of were, it's kind of, we don't want to get in a thing where we're treating people differently based on a personal opinion on what they do. So that, that's just a thought. One other thing, Marty, you're on the bid board, or you do attend the bid meeting if somebody does. Do you have any, did they talk about this food truck business or any of that come up there?
It hasn't the last time that I have here, but certainly we'll, we'll convey back to them their letter that they wrote to you. And Patty sits on the board.
I was just going to say Patty as well.
So.
Can you, can you just find out what, what their thought is on it? I mean, we're, there might be certain things we can do, but maybe it's best that we just think about a personal business.
See her side of it.
Go ahead.
Who are, who are the president and vice president of the board?
The bid board?
Did you find out, Marty, of the Genesee Country Market?
No, no, I don't have the president, vice president, but I will probably have it before the end of the meeting.
Okay, you can find out, and we'll continue on, and then we'll get it. But at this point, it's just an application for an event, and bid is working closely with them. They want them down there to provide additional foot traffic, and it helps bid. So, and I think the community likes it. So at this point, we'll try to address that food issue on the side, but we need to get this thing moving forward. And I do agree with, I thought it was kind of odd that the news release came out before we technically officially had vetted this yet, but I don't know if that was just a planned thing and it got ahead of the game because we delayed. I don't know how that happened, but I thought it was a little odd myself, too. All right. The next council conference meeting will be held Tuesday, May twenty-six, seven PM during the Zoom conference meeting. We sent everybody an email about possibly opening up the twenty-sixth meeting for real life in person with social distancing protocols in place. Some of you had concerns. Is there, those of you that had concerns, do you have a comfort level when you'd like to meet? I mean, we're going to have to meet at some point. Patty, you have a question?
I'm sorry to interrupt, but did we actually say okay to them having the farmers market?
I believe so. I didn't see anybody, we had questions that needed to be answered, but nobody said not to do it.
Fine.
And again, I don't think we officially approve it. I think it's more of a notification, kind of like a liquor license, we're notified this is happening. I mean, we're not really, we don't really disapprove or approve. I mean, Bob made up a point, if we want to get to that point, that's something we should bring up at a conference meeting and, and not for this particular case, but talk about in general, future, you know, a point, applications. If we want to address them in a certain way and, and criteria and vote on them, we can do that in the future. But at this point, we can't really do it for one that's already been in the, in the cycle.
Okay.
Rosemary, you had a question?
Go ahead.
Rosemary, you're muted.
Excuse me, babe.
Okay, go ahead now.
I, I'm not talking about the food truck or the, the farmers market anymore. I wanted to talk about the possibility of having a meeting coming up twenty-six, and I don't know if there's enough room. And I don't know if there's enough room for six feet in between us. Plus, we have Heidi, plus we have our city manager, plus we have our attorney. Plus, we have uh, Steve, Matt Worth, uh, Ray Tord, if he's there, our police department.
Right.
Uh, our governor tells you, and not that, our governor tells you that you can't congregate more than 10 people. So how are we going to do is hang some people out of the windows?
Well, fir- first of all, the um, the city is, I'm told, has leeway because being a municipality, we have to conduct certain business. And like police department and so on, if there was 10 policemen at a scene, they're allowed to go there because obviously they're doing business. And we'd be the same way, um, because the public has a right to see their government working and we have to be open. Um, this is okay for a while, um, but at, at some point, people are going to want to come and speak at a council meeting.
Right.
They're going to come and see us like Al said, face to face and look us in the eye and express their pleasure or displeasure about what we're doing. So at some point, they're going to have to do it. The question is.
Are we going to wear masks if, if we attend these meetings then?
And again, once we decide to do that, then city staff will make sure that the room is rearranged. We'll have to set up tables differently. Maybe we would limit, um, you know, certain uh, people of the public or we would video it from there. Um, and allow only a certain number of the public in. Obviously, the size of the room would determine the maximum occupancy under the new standards. And we would have to spread everybody out and we could remove chairs. So there wouldn't be any place for anybody to sit other than proper places. It's new to us, we'd have to figure it out. And they, and they already kind of have some ideas and they're just going over it now because we're looking at a phase. And I, I heard today that the governor is allowing Finger Lakes as one of only three regions to move forward to phase one.
Yep.
We're in a better area than some.
Right.
So that also allows us to kind of expand out a little bit. Um, but we would probably look at the city's plan. And uh, but again, it's, it's, we got another couple of weeks and I didn't know if we wanted to try to schedule that, put them on the bubble to get that done? Or if we wanted to maybe postpone it for one more meeting? And then they give city hall a chance to kind of see how things are working and spread things out.
I might have to postpone it one more meeting simply because Raylene has a mask. And uh, uh, my age is getting.
You don't want to take any chances, I understand. I know, I get it.
Well, by postponing it one meeting, you're going to give, you can give the city more time to come up with a plan.
Right, right. And that, and that's kind of, I mean, they, they just threw this out there because they're working on the uh, the plan already. All right, and they, they inquired to me to, to quiz council and ask maybe what they felt about when they wanted to come back. So if we're kind of, I, the, the gift I'm getting here is that most people want to come back, not the May 26th meeting, but the first meeting in June.
Yes.
Okay.
I would agree with that, you know, because right now, we still have a lot, we still have COVID coming and, and that's it. I mean, why take a chance?
And we don't even know how the opening is going to be and if that's going to accelerate things or decelerate things. This will give us about a month because you figure it's two weeks to the next meeting, approximately two weeks to the following meeting. So this will give them about a month to kind of come up with a plan. And they'll be already uh, into the phase one a couple of weeks by then and they'll have an idea of what's going on. That make sense?
Yeah.
No, absolutely not. I, I want to go back to, to a normal meeting with, with the precautions of space and mask. I'm tired of this, 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 this phone conver- conversation. It's got to end.
I, I get it and you're, you're well noted. Um, so, and you know, I, I don't know how, this isn't really a vote, but it's that, because we've never had a vote on coming out of lockdown before. So I don't know how we want to do this, but from what I'm seeing, um, I'm seeing that the majority of council wants to wait at least one more meeting. Um, and again, unless something changes, and I agree with Al, unless something changes and we have really good news in the next couple of weeks, um, then we should really be open to the idea of possibly having an in-person.
Sure, vaccine, anything.
You know, but I mean, it is two weeks away and the way this thing has been working, every day has been different, left and right. And we're going all different directions every day, it's a new thing. So, but I agree with Al, I mean, I'm pretty much about had it with um, the, you know, the, the, the logistical aspect of trying to get everybody um, on, you know, screen and having their say and, and just getting work done. It's getting difficult to do it with all these people on a screen instead of in person. So uh, at some point, we're going to have to come out of it. But.
Yep.
Um, Patty, you had something to say?
I agree with both of you that I'm tired of doing it this way, but if there are people who are concerned, I think it is fair to wait until June.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there is, I mean, we don't, we're not, and you know, we got to walk into each other's shoes for a minute. I mean, if you have a serious concern about a family member, um, you know, we should at least be neighborly and try to accommodate that. But um, at this point, um, it, we're probably one more meeting the most. We, we definitely can't go beyond that. I would say we're all in agreement on that. We're not going to go, we're not going to go to June meeting unless there's some catastrophic change and the governor locks us all back down again. I can't see where we can justify doing this um, more than one more time in May.
What, what, Gina, would it be possible to have a meeting? And then if anyone doesn't want to attend, let them attend by June?
That was my other suggestion and I didn't want to get into too much detail on it, but I was going to throw that out to the um, to Marty and them after this meeting and see if there was any technology where we could somehow um, have them be there, but not be there in person and be there either on the phone. But again, you're already six feet apart and now we're trying to bring somebody in on a internet connection where mine was acting wacky earlier. So um, it could be problematic, it could be problematic.
Why don't we just, look into?
Go ahead, Kathy.
Why don't, why don't we just wait till June like we, okay? Like you said, that first meeting in June.
Well, even then, we might have a problem with, somebody might have a situation where maybe they come down with COVID and they're, and they're like stuck inside and quarantined and they can't come out.
Okay.
Well, it's not mandatory that we make every meeting. I mean, there are, it's, for instances, when people have gone away or something like that or had a business trip. Jeremy had a business trip one time and Paul has different obligations with his children. I mean, for me, I can't take a chance of bringing anything home to my daughter.
No, I get.
That there's something happen.
So there, there is your option right there. Um, we could, you, you could either, if you feel you can't, you could not attend, but I think by June, we're going to have a lot more answers and we'll know.
Right.
I just don't see us, it, it's going to be a whole month away and we'll know if this uh, phasing, by then, I would hope we're in multiple phases and we're almost back to normal by then.
I know.
Not waiting, not going uh, you know, three months between each phase. I would hope we go sooner. But we'll see. Governor's gonna, according to his own words, it's how smart we are and how we act i- if it's going to continue forward. And, you know, so he wants to make sure that we're not just pulling off the stops and, and not wearing masks and uh, going crazy. Rachel, you had something you wanted to say or? I thought it, thought it was unmuted. Okay.
Hi Gina, I don't really, you know, I don't want to belabor this point at all, but I wanted to say there are different meeting protocols where someone can attend by video. Um, and we'll work with George on that if someone does need that option. Um, they may need to announce that they're attending. The IDA board does that a lot with certain members. So um, but again, not to belabor the point at all, but there are ways we can look into that. Thank you.
Okay, good. And, and you got to remember too, um, we're, we're, we're going to be casting votes. And you know, I don't want to get in the point of after emergency where people just discard the meeting dates and they just call in and make their vote and then sign out, you know? So there is a reason why we have to be in person and there is a reason why you can't take a vote from somebody who's not at a meeting. Um, in this virtual meeting, we're actually meeting all those guidelines so we can technically vote. But when you're not showing up, it'd be easy to say, hey, I got a business trip. I'll just call in and vote on the budget from, you know, wherever. Uh, that's probably not how it should be done and there's probably rules that prevent that from happening. Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll address it. I would say, let's plan on the first meeting in June, we're back in person with social distancing protocols. And it gives uh, the city re- administration a chance to uh, look into getting us separated and getting the room set up so that we can accommodate as much of the open meeting as we can. And then we'll go, if we run into problems, then uh, then we'll have to address that and we'll have to make changes. But we got a month to figure it out, including the next, which will be a virtual one. Okay?
Okay.
All right, city attorneys report. Does George Van Est have anything to report?
Yes, uh, council, nothing specific. We are obviously working on COVID matters that have come up as well as trying to move full city projects and matters in a normal course. We uh, can progress things working with city manager's office and department heads. But at this point, there's nothing specific to report on.
Okay. Any questions for the city attorney?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, city managers report.
A couple of things, uh, right at the beginning of my report, Matt Worth, if it's okay, had a, had a brief, uh, wanted to share a brief bit of, bit of information regarding one of the um, RFPs on engineers. So Matt, if you're available, if you want to do that now.
Okay, man, go ahead.
Good evening, council members. Uh, we, at the last meeting, we had uh, proposed the selection of an engineer for the Richmond Harvester project. That contract is not ready, has not been fully reviewed by DOT or by the city yet. Uh, but I did want to let council know that the selection committee did select TY Lin. My Lynn from Rochester, they are, uh, have some local roots, they've done work for us before. Uh, and they really seem to have a, a fine grasp of the project and what we're trying to accomplish with that. And uh, together a very good team. So um, that is something that I want to let council know that, that the next meeting, there will be a uh, a uh, an expectation that uh, we will have that contract and it will be TY Lin as the engineer for that project.
Okay, can you, can you say that again? Because ironically enough, everything came out perfectly except the name of the engineering firm. It's almost like you timed it perfectly that way.
She enters TY Lin out of Rochester, area, obviously Rochester firm with some local roots and have done work for Batavia previously.
Okay, good. So that's why it's not on this, uh, it's not, I, we know who it is, we just got to finalize the contract and then we'll do that resolution to approve that contract.
Right.
Okay. All right, anything else there, Marty?
Yeah, uh, just, I need to make sure that council knows earlier today, you received a copy of a memo that was sent to uh, city employees. And in addition, we sent along a copy of uh, it was a cash analysis and then there was some other information we provided as well. Um, in relationship to how we're dealing with the current financial situation. We have uh, checked in with several different organizations that are also tracking this. NISAC is, NICOM is, uh, the state comptroller's office is. And we've been in communication with them, with the county, um, talking internally with financial staff. And the, the amount that, it was actually closer to 2.6 than 2.5 million. I went back and verified on the number. That is a projected worst case scenario. That's not saying that that is going to happen. That's saying that, that if circumstances continue to align, we need to make sure that we're properly planned for those types of contingencies. In relationship to that, the first month's sales and use tax in Genesee County has come out. The information was 26.02% lower than this time last year. Um, we've also taken a look at a, a couple of other, there are a couple of other questions. One of them had to do with, had to do with um, um, you know, why didn't some of these cuts come forward before? And one of the things I'm going to, I'm just telling you straight up is, is, and we're pointing it out in the draft press release that you received. We have a reduction or elimination of some services that we would not normally bring up in a budget situation. This being an emergency situation. In addition to financial, we do have COVID-19 situations that are facing us. And so we are looking at what is prudent for the city, what is good. Nothing is really good about this kind of a thing. But at the same time, it's important for us to be fiscally prudent. Uh, we, we are, we've been taking a look at how our, how our cash flows are going to go. We're following closely with the state how the uh, aid to localities is going to go. Um, in fact, I, I know that we get almost daily updates on those and we're following all of that very closely. One of the things I will tell you is that yes, there is, there are two or three part-time uh, permanent employees that are identified for furlough. Uh, yes, there are positions that are frozen in this recommendation here at least for the short term. The month of May is a bellwether month for the city of Batavia. And, and that's a lot of, a big chunk of the city's revenues come in, in the month of May traditionally. So we're watching it very closely. In the meantime, we already, I mean, we have the planning processes in place to do, to be prepared for these other types of planning contingencies. And we have talked with the union presidents, we have talked with the department heads on all of that information. Um, the, in, the, the stuff that we announced today had to do with specific things that we could do that didn't, that didn't involve complex uh, discussions with collective bargaining units. In addition, um, we did have initial freezes that were in place as early as April 3rd of this year and some postponements of purchases. In, and it, on top of this, what you were looking at here is general fund operating type revenues and expenses. We are also working on plans. I've met with public works and will be meeting with the others on, on uh, capital planning in relationship to our reserves. And we're going to be looking at, at open purchase orders, any of them that aren't filled, that they're not necessary to be followed through on. And we're going to be taking those on a case by case basis and reviewing them with department heads. The information we put together with you is about a two week, more than a two week process, but we, it was several meetings together with myself, the department heads, um, Dawn or HR person. And, and it was working through and vetting a number of different things to see if we had savings. One of the questions that was asked me was if we have some individuals that are laid off or, or that are collecting unemployment, um, is there a cost savings? And the answer is yes, there is a cost savings to the city. And, and, and I, I don't want to dive into the weeds on it for you, but just to let you know, I mean, it's, it's enough, significant enough of a cost savings that, that it, it is worthwhile to look at, particularly when we're dealing with employees that in a large part are having to work, either work from home or are not working as a result of COVID-19 or that we're trying to work to get proper accommodations, physical accommodations in the office place to be able to take care of what they need to take care of. Um, I also had received a question in relationship to, to reserves. Reserves is a separate conversation for us. Um, reserves is a, are treated as a different set of money, just trying to pull them in. There are more complications and strings attached to those. So that is a totally separate conversation that we are going to be having. In relation, also, um, the staff, we are looking at a cash flow analysis for the general fund, the water fund and the sewer fund. And seeing how those cash flows are going to go from now through the end of the fiscal year. And at least through Cr- I know through Christmas right away, but through the fiscal year, so that we can have some good information. We have been talking with municipal solutions, who is, or the representatives in relationship to bonds and talking to them about how things are feeling out at the legislature because they're working on some ideas for several municipalities in the state of New York that are in the cit- that are in a similar situation that we are in. And so we're going to, we're going to see how some of those pieces of legislation fold out. Um, in addition, the city of Batavia is um, we are still operating under the, if it's over a hundred dollars for general purchases and if it's over $250 for, for purchases in public works, those are approved by the city manager's office before those purchases are made. Uh, we're looking at them, if there are purchases that can be put off, if they need to be put off, they will be. If it's something that needs to be done right now, if it's a COVID-19 purchase, you know, we'll be getting those. We're hoping for at least some reimbursement, not a huge amount, but some. But I will also say on the positive side of things, we are working on some, we are still holding out hope and we're keeping our hat and ring there to make sure that the governor protects as much of the VLT. Any dollar that we, every dollar of VLT that we receive is not in the budget, so it is a plus for us this year. And in addition to that, uh, we're looking at, we're watching some of the other ones like the federal and some of these others, they may or may not come about. But regardless, we have to plan, we have to plan as if there's not going to be another cent come in extra from the outside while continuing to work to get additional money in from the outside. So we're doing both. And it, it is, is a big challenge for us. One of the positive things here so far is that we have not been, we have not had to hit the core operations for police, fire or public works. There are some levels of service in certain areas that if you want to talk to individual department heads, I'm sure you can. And they will, they'll let you know there are certain things that may not be done quite as often. But our main protections of public health and safety and taking care of our water or sewer or roads, those things will continue. Um, and we'll, we will continue to watch uh, things very closely with the, with the state and, and with how our cash flow and our budget lays out. and with how our cash flow and our budget lays out. So that that's the basic situation for us right now. It's a challenge. We have not laid off any permanent full-time employees yet. It is in the second part of planning phase to discuss things with the unions. We have had that initial meeting with the union presidents. And we will continue to discuss with them contingencies if, in fact, things head south. If they get worse, then we'll definitely, we're definitely making sure that we're planned right now where we sit in relationship to about 1.1 million in in postponed expenditures or frozen positions, those type of things. We feel that we are in a pretty decent cash position right now, at least for the next few months. With that said, May is a bellwether month. And we are watching it very closely, and come June first, we will be taking a very good look and close look at every piece of revenue that's come in to see where it's trending. And we will be coming back with plans, I'm sure, additional announcements to the city council in June.
Is there any questions, anyone has in reference to that news release that'll be going out right after this meeting?
Yeah.
It's pretty, it's pretty disappointing that, you know, this whole thing is now crushing us right down on the local level, right down to our part-timers. And it's affecting services in our own community. But there's really, we don't really have much choice. So it's it's going to be a really tough road going from here until we know how the rest of the year is going to, going to look. And and it's not something that that's enjoyable to do. It's just something that's necessary to do. And we wouldn't have normally done this when we could function normally and through a normal budget process. The question came up, and I had that same asked me today. Why didn't we make all these millions of dollars of cuts years ago and save all this money? Well, we're, we're talking about our youth program and our parks program, and we're talking about part-timers, some of which are help at the police department and help at the fire department and so on. These are all part-time employees that provide services. And and now there's going to be a longer wait. There might not be things that don't get done until months. So these are not things that we would normally want to operate without. So if we can operate with them, we can afford them, we want them. But now we're in emergency mode, and this is a lot different than a normal budget year. Bob, you had something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I just, Marty, I just want to ask you to possibly caution your staff. This number you showed is a total revenue shortfall. I saw that number identified in an email over the weekend, the exact same number.
Yeah.
And I just, I just hope the staff realizes, until you finalize things and release it to council, it's not an official number. And we want to be cautious because then you end up in a situation of disinformation and misinformation, which is very dangerous. So I just want to comment. I know it's a very stressful period you're going through right now. Thank you.
And I, and I did want to comment back. I did do some follow-up, and that number was actually mentioned in a press release a couple of weeks ago. So I did do some follow-up on that. But we will definitely, it's definitely is challenging on dealing with these kinds of things, and we'll definitely visit with staff and and work to do our best here to keep council informed and keep appropriate levels of discretion.
And and I think, Marty, what I discussed earlier, and I haven't had information, but the city doesn't get, isn't involved in full unemployment. We do have to pay part of the unemployment benefits, correct?
Yeah, we do, we do. If I, I mean, I don't want to pick on on any particular, but if you picked the same number out of the air, 30,000 or something, you know, we'd look and be looking at approximately 15,000, and we would have been paid, we'd be paying out, which is about half their salary, plus you've got you know, retirement benefits and those kind of things. So it has more than 50% savings in cost for us by taking these kind of moves. With that said, we're talking about people. And we're talking about livelihoods, and we're talking about our levels of service to the city. So we are, we are definitely keeping all of that in mind when decisions are made.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
No.
Okay, so hopefully this will get better. And again, this is our beginning of our budget year. We've only been into it a month. So there's plenty of time to make up some of the loss or at least break even. And I'm hoping that, you know, if we can get things moving forward, we might have at least a chance to do that. So we'll see how this plays. We'll know more in a month or two, how things are going to go. The county gets a monthly report on sales tax revenue, and I think as soon as some of the businesses start to open, we know what it looks like with a month without everything being totally locked down. So it can't be any worse than that. It's got to get better because if people are working and and revenue is coming in, then it's going to be better than a total lockdown. So it's, it can't be any worse, although I hope I don't stand corrected. I hope it doesn't get worse. But I'm pretty sure it's going to get a little better. All right, as time goes on. Any committee reports? Patty, go ahead.
Usually I have wonderful committee reports. I have two sad items, both for Batavia and the Jackson Square concerts will be canceled for the summer.
It's unfortunate.
Yes.
Anyone else? Unfinished, unfinished business?
Yeah, I I just wanted, in case anybody didn't get the word, the parade had to be canceled, unfortunately. There were a lot of disappointed people. I even had people say, well, what if I just drive down the street by myself? Well, we can't do that either. And while while I'm at it, just a caution to everyone. There's a lot of computer games going on, a lot of people hacking accounts. If you get an email from anyone, like another councilperson or Marty, and it says, please open the following, check the address before you open the attachments. I know another organization I belong to, they seem to have gotten our names, but it's when you check the address that it's sent from, it'll be 1-6050-AD17 at whatever, you know? So just a word of advice, be careful before you open the attachments. Make sure you know exactly what's coming. Thanks.
Rosemary?
Yes, unfinished business. It might be very trivial to some of you, but there's a couple that lived in the sixth ward for years. They have a beautiful, lovely house on Ostroud Avenue. Neighbors moved in last year, and they're feeding birds and the squirrels. What is happening is these people have a lovely home, a yard that is beautifully landscaped, an in-ground pool. They cannot, they 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 put their table out for the summertime. They've started to put their furniture out, and birds are just going all over their backyard. Squirrels are bringing in the peanuts from their yard to the other yard, and they're just, they just don't want to go through this for another year. They have six bird feeding stands out there, and they've put up a couple more. I mean, how can we help them? Can we, you know, do some, can we limit to how many bird feeders a house can have? What, what can we do for them?
Marty, did you, you got the email. Did you look into this, or?
Yes, and I, yes, and I'm still trying to make contact, but I reached out to the Department of Environmental Conservation. Because some of those issues that you're talking about, if you're talking about wild animals, I believe may come under their purview. So so Rosemary letting you know that, yes, we are following up on that and and we'll be getting back to you and the rest of council.
Certain areas in the United States have ordinances against this, that you can have so many bird feeders and that's it. Because it's very destructive, and I'd appreciate any help I can get with this.
Yeah, this is, this is a code issue, and Marty's going to look into it. So Marty, if you want to get back to us on that.
I will.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
No.
Okay, Mr. Canelli, Resolution 38 dash 2020.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution authorizing the adoption of a purchasing manual for Batavia.
Seconded by?
I'll raise my hand.
Councilman Byakowski. Any questions or concerns?
No.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs? Christian?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 39, 2020. Councilman Byakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution authorizing agreement with New York State Department of Transportation for preliminary engineering, design, and row incidentals for the city of Batavia Highway Preventative Maintenance Harvester in Richmond.
Okay.
Seconded by? Ms. Christian? Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Got it.
Councilman Byakowski, seconded by Mr. Canelli. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Okay. Good day for everyone, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Good.
Okay.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.